That was a good one, Ron. We call this special workshop meeting in the city council to get, uh, to order. You have in front of you a copy of the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting and at this time I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Have a motion and second any further discussion? Here are none, all in favor, say the five, I say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed? One of these items was being stricken.
Actually, number four, I don't believe we're going to have time to get to.
Okay.
That way you'll have sufficient time to discuss the other three items.
Alright, first, uh, first item tonight is reevaluation report and, uh, Dr. Woodruff will let you lead into that.
Thank you. During our budget deliberations this year, we spend a lot of time talking about the future. And we know that one of the items that's going to impact the city and the county will be the revaluation. Uh, we're very pleased this evening to have the folks who are actually going to be charged with doing that. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Harry so he can introduce his staff member and we do appreciate the information you're going to share.
Thank you, Dr. Woodruff. I'm Harry Smith and my, with me tonight is Kevin Turner, who's our appraisal supervisor. And we did have a PowerPoint that we'd like to go through tonight just to talk about the revaluation process. Give you a little general overview of the reval process, what steps are taken to assess the properties, uh, go through the timeline, uh, as far as implementing the project and the statutory requirements that go with it. And then Kevin's going to go through some sales slides and kind of show you what's, what the appraisers are seeing regarding, uh, sales that are occurring out in the county. And, uh, you can kind of see when we get to those slides what current sales prices are and how they compare to the current assessed values of the property and whether they're indicating de- increases or decreases and, and you'll see a little bit of a mixed bag as we go through those. The main thing, we'd kind of start off with, um, the purpose for doing a revaluation or what is a revaluation? And basically that's conducting a mass appraisal of all the real estate parcels in the county with the goal to create a fair and equitable tax base. And, uh, the reason we do that, obviously the reassessors office, the county assessor is responsible for valuing all property in the county, which includes real estate, personal property, motor vehicles. When you look at the real estate market, you'll notice that values change over a period of time. They don't always stay the same due to the market influences. And over time, they'll change in different areas at different rates because of different property types and that type of thing. So even though the state requires us to appraise at market value, that's as of the revaluation date. After that date, when market values or market trends change, it causes inequities in the tax base because some folks are paying what their property is actually worth. Some may be paying on a value that's more than their property is actually worth at that point in time and others the other way. So the revaluation is designed to adjust everybody back to the current market value and that's supposed to be going to create a fair and equitable distribution of the tax burden if everybody's paying on a fair market value. In Anza County, the, um, revale history briefly, the state requires that all counties in North Carolina conduct a revaluation at least every eight years. And there's been a lot of discussion over the years as far as if that's too long to do a revaluation. So our, our board of commissioners back in the nineties decided to do it on a more frequent basis. They moved first to a six-year revaluation and then go in, uh, to a four-year revaluation after that. So currently, we're doing a four-year revale, uh, based on the current resolution that our board of commissioners adopted. Two thousand and fourteen will actually be the second four-year revale. We, in two, year two thousand and six was the first six-year revale, then two thousand and ten was a four-year and two thousand and fourteen will be the second four-year revaluation that we've conducted. Uh, just a quick overview of the revaluation process. And of course, when you're on a four-year revaluation cycle, the first one is kind of a continuing process, which is reviewing the property characteristics. Our appraisers are out in the field all the time visiting properties due to new building, um, permits that have been issued or property use that are requested by appraisers or just general observations in the areas in which they work. So they're constantly updating the property characteristics to reflect that the, the, uh, square footage, the depreciation, all those things that influence the value of the property are accurate because that's very important during the revaluation to provide a proper assessment. Next step is collecting, verifying and analyzing sales data. And we're going to look at some of the sales data that we've collected as we go through the presentation tonight. Uh, that's important when we get down to assigning the values to the properties because we want the values that we assign to reflect what's actually going on in the market. Uh, the next important step is developing the schedule of values. And basically this is a, a manual that we construct, um, that contains a lot of the procedures that are used in the appraisal process, how the data is collected, uh, that goes through the grading of the properties, the, the construction styles and so forth. And basically that's kind of our toolbox for our appraisers to use so that when they appraise a property, they're looking at the, the definitions that are using that schedule of values and the rates that are included in there so that when they apply those rates to the property characteristics, it'll produce a value that's representative of what properties are selling for. And as, uh, we're in the process of, of doing about three of these things right now, which is analyzing the sales data, developing the schedule of values, applying the schedule of values and also statistical testing, which basically is, um, what we do to, to tell if our assessments are equating values that, that correspond to what market values are. And, uh, the state department of revenue also does, um, value ratio studies for all 100 counties every year. And basically what they're measuring is assessment level. Remember, we talked about market value. If the assessed value and the sales price are the same, obviously your market value, we're at a hundred percent. If it's, if one of the other those is higher that are lower than the other, then it's going to be something different than a hundred percent. But we kind of do it based on the median sales price, so the median sales are a hundred percent. So, uh, everything should be plus or minus about five percent by the majority of the observations that we're looking at. And, um, in order to make sure that we're doing that appropriately, we use mass appraisal guidelines that are published by the I double A O, which is our professional organization known as, uh, the International Association of Assessing Officers and also the North Carolina Department of Revenue. The schedule of values we mentioned, there's actually a statutory process for adopting the schedule of values. And this is basically the timeline that we have laid out to, um, go through that process. On September sixteenth, we'll be submitting the schedule of values to the board of commissioners and also making schedules available for public inspection. There is a, um, public hearing required before the, the schedules are adopted. So we'll be advertising that public hearing and then in October, we'll be conducting the public hearing and asking the board to consider adopting the schedules at their October twenty-first meeting. One other statutory requirement that was enacted in two thousand and three by the state legislature was what's known as a revenue neutral disclosure. And this is really kind of a, something that happens after the revale is complete, but during the budget preparation process. And the original intent of this statute was basically to, to disclose to the taxpayers whether the revaluation is being used to increase tax revenue or not. And the revenue neutral, basically there's a formula that we use to go back and measure how much growth occurred in our jurisdiction since the last revaluation and calculate what the revenue neutral rate would be, which would be the rate that would, given the new values that were produced by the revaluation, generate the same amount of revenue, but also allow for the growth that we've seen in between time. And as you may recall, last year, or not last year, but in the two thousand and ten revaluation, uh, the county's revenue neutral rate was actually sixty point five cents, which was higher than the old tax rate. And that was basically due because we, when we had all the numbers finalized, our tax base only grew about two and a half percent, but we had been averaging around four to four and a half percent growth from new construction since the last revale. So had we not done a revaluation, we would have probably had a larger tax base in two thousand and ten that we, than we had. And then we ended up going to a fifty-eight point five tax rate, but the revenue neutral rate was actually higher than the, than the rate that was adopted. One thing we like to do, we appreciate the opportunity to come share this, uh, information with you, the board here tonight. Uh, we also will plan on doing a presentation to go out on GTN G fourteen, schedule other public information, uh, presentations to get the word out to the citizens and kind of give them some information about the revaluation and also we'll have this information on our county website as we go forward. And, uh, we did have, uh, a place for questions at the end, but if anybody has any questions as we're going through this, feel free to stop me. We'll, we'll be glad to address questions as we go through it also. I have a tendency to talk kind of fast, so slow me down a bit.
But let me, let me clarify one thing for the public. The schedule that you just showed has to do with basically the schedule of the assumptions or parameters you're going to make in doing the revaluation.
That's correct.
So the public that's listening tonight, that's not a public hearing that talks about individual assessments.
That's correct.
That's simply a public hearing to say, if you want to have input on how the methodology is put together, you can come.
Absolutely.
And, yeah, the, the real assessment information is months away.
Right. And, uh, as we go through the, uh, well, I'll back up to the timeline a little bit. We, we kind of stopped with the schedule of values, but we are currently planning on having the assessments published and, and mailed out to the taxpayers somewhere around the end of January during the first part of February timeframe. That's a good point. Thank you, sir.
Would you elaborate on the schedule of values?
Sure. Any specific question or just?
Just kind of expound on the.
Okay. Okay, yeah. Basically, it's, it's a, it's a manual that goes through the appraisal process. It talks about, um, some of the, a little more in-depth as far as some of those topics we talked about as far as gathering information, reviewing the property characteristics, categorizing properties, grading improvements. It also contains a range of rates that are used in our computer system to actually calculate the values. In other words, like, uh, heated square foot rate for different types of properties or categories of properties, uh, a range of land rates, a range of, uh, codes that are used for different land classifications such as oceanfront lots or second row lots or, or, uh, city interior lots, rural homesites, those types of things. It just goes in a lot more detail as far as the different categories and classifications and has a description of the, the methodology that's used to apply those rates to calculate the values.
These are factors and values that correspond to those factors that you basically, the, the computer, so to speak.
Right.
Calculates then each individual property.
Right. The, the appraisers use those classifications to apply to each property to list its property characteristics so that when the calculations are done, it's, it's treating every average quality construction house with the same square foot rate. And then it's using the standard depreciation that's been assigned to that particular type of property so that it's uniform throughout. So that the appraiser isn't just going out and saying, well, this house is worth fifty thousand, this is worth sixty. There's a systematic process that evaluates what characteristics are recorded for that property and applies it to the rates that are in that schedule to calculate the values that are all done consistently.
I guess my question really was, if I knew the schedule of values, could I guess my property value?
Yeah, within a range, yeah. Within a range, yes, sir.
I have a question in regards to, to your assessed value for a particular property. How, how, how close would it be to a independent real estate appraisal for that same said house? Is there a variance of one percent, half percent?
Well, we're, bear in mind, we're doing mass appraisal. When you do a fee appraisal, they're going out and picking three comps. We're using a, a whole universe of sales to construct the schedule of values and apply those rates uniformly. So, um, over the years, we see appraisals come in usually during the, the, um, appeals process. It'll come into the board of equalization review and sometimes there's really close, sometimes there's more of a difference. And, and then in, in those cases, our board will go and dissect the accounts that were used in appraisal and make their own determination based on what the appraiser says, what the fee appraisal says and what our staff presents as far as comps and they'll make their decision whether to change it or not change it based on, on their, um, experience. And most of those have got a significant amount of appraisal experience. I mean, appraisal by definition is an opinion of value. I think generally speaking, if it's within five percent, it's, you're both correct, so to speak. You know? And we would, you know, the appeals process is, is designed to handle, uh, assessments that are substantially overvalued and usually if it's within two or three or five percent, the board's probably going to just sustain the value that we have on the property.
So for example, if, if someone just buys a, a home, for example, during that period of time and, you know, they go through the finance process and, and, uh, their independent appraisal came in at two hundred thousand. And then your process gets finished and, and the value gets put at two hundred and forty thousand.
There shouldn't be that much difference.
There shouldn't be that much difference.
And usually if there's something that much different, usually there's a difference in the square footage or something major that once we correct our records, it'll, it'll kind of follow along.
And at that point, they can do the appeals process and straight.
And we encourage folks, we're going to talk about the appeals process at the end as far as what folks need to bring this, uh, that can, can bolster, uh, what we're, you know, our decision as far as making a decision on their value.
Thank you.
I'm turning it over to Kevin. He's going to go through some sales slides, but before I turn it over, this is, um, we're going to kind of go through, there's, there's quite a few of these, but we'll go through them rather quickly. But basically just wanted to share some informations as far as what we're focusing on and looking at. Up at the top, you see the parcel identification number. Right under that, you'll have the two thousand and ten assessed value. In this case, it's two hundred and ninety-five thousand, one forty. Down at the bottom, you'll see the neighborhood number, which is just a code that we use internally. When we're doing our evaluation process, we want to make sure that the values that are set for each neighborhood are based on similar properties. So we group properties together by neighborhood codes. And ideally, we'll find enough comparables in each neighborhood to use to set the values for that neighborhood. During this revaluation, it has proven to be a little bit more challenging because some neighborhoods don't have very many sales. So in those cases, our appraisers are either expanding the timeframe, looking a little further back in time or, or spending their geographic area to go down the road or a few miles down the road and, and find a similar neighborhood to use the comparables, uh, for to set the values in those neighborhoods. It'll tell you the township and we're going to start out in Jacksonville. All the sales slides that we have in here are two thousand and thirteen sales that have occurred since the first of this year. And you can see down in the bottom left corner, this property sold for two sixty-eight and comparing the difference in the sales price to the previous assessed value with two thousand and ten assessed value, it's a nine percent decrease. So just kind of wanted to go through what we're looking at on each slide and I'll let Kevin kind of go through and, and do a little more.
But just before he does that, to clarify, just because on this particular sale, there was a nine percent decrease, doesn't actually mean that your assessed value in fourteen is going to go down. Because if in the neighborhood of comparables, this house should have been selling as others sold at two eighty-five. So it's not, I mean, for the listening public, just because this house went from two ninety-five down to two sixty-eight, doesn't mean that that assessed value is going to come down nine percent.
Not necessarily, but what we tried to do when, when putting this presentation together is to take sales that are pretty typical as far as what we're seeing. So it doesn't necessarily mean everything in this neighborhood is going to drop nine percent like you're saying, but this is pretty representative of what we're seeing. So, and as we go through the slides, I'll, I'll go ahead and tell you upfront, you're probably going to see more that have a decrease than an increase. And, and basically, um, that's pretty typical. It's probably ninety-five percent of the appeals that we've had since the last revaluation have been folks that bought their homes in two thousand and eleven or twelve or even thirteen and they paid significantly less than what the two thousand and ten value is. That's most of the appeals we're having. Like I said, that's not going to hold up true for every property in the county or in the city for that matter. But you'll see that in most cases, when we're looking at sales in neighborhoods, we're seeing decreases rather than increases. So we've tried to pick sales that you're right, you're correct. Doesn't necessarily mean this property. Didn't exactly that, but it's kind of represented as far as what we're seeing. And we're just kind of doing this to kind of give you a, um, overview of what to expect, so to speak, even though these are not exact numbers and there's more sales to occur between now and the end of the year, obviously, that'll, that'll change these numbers. So these aren't final numbers by any means. It's just as, for illustrative purposes.
Thank you.
And again, if you have any questions while I'm going through the slides, just feel free to stop and stop me and ask and we'll do the best we can to answer them for you. And this, uh, this next slide we're going to take a look at is a townhome in the Village of the Glen, which is a section of Carolina Forest. And you can see the two thousand and ten assessed value was one hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. And just recently sold in January for a hundred and eighteen thousand, so a little less than a one percent decrease in value there. And next is a, a home in Biltmore Estates. You can see the two thousand and ten assessed value was two forty-five, eight sixty. And it just sold in April for two hundred and thirty-two thousand and that represents a six percent decrease in value. This one is in St. James Park over in Williamsburg Plantation, which is off of Gumbratsch Road. The, uh, two thousand and ten assessed value was two hundred and eleven thousand. Sold in January for two hundred and five thousand and that represents a three percent decrease in value. And next, we have a house on Ivory Lee Lane, which is in Woodlands. The two thousand and ten assessed value is three hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. Sold this past May for two hundred and sixty-five thousand and that represents a twelve percent decrease in value. This one is on Thon Trail over in Parkwood Estates. The two thousand and ten assessed value was two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. It sold in April for two hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred dollars and that one represents a twenty-one percent decrease in value. This next slide we're going to take a look at is over in Northwoods. The two thousand and ten assessed value was a hundred and sixty thousand, seven ten. And it just sold in June for a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So that one represents a ten percent decrease or increase in value, I'm sorry. And this next slide is still in Northwoods. This one is on Vernon Drive. It was assessed in two thousand and ten for a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. It just sold in April for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and that represents a five percent increase in value. Now we're going to be moving towards the downtown area. This is a duplex on, uh, Court Street. In two thousand and ten, it was assessed for a hundred and fifty-six thousand and seventy dollars. And it sold this past January for a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, which is a four percent increase in value. Now we're going to be moving over to Bay Shore Drive area. This residence was assessed for a hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars in two thousand and ten. And it just sold in July for a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars for an eighteen percent increase in value. This sale is of a double wide over on, uh, Miracle Drive. And in two thousand and ten, it was assessed at seventy-three thousand, seven, or seventy-three thousand, three forty. It just sold in April for sixty-eight thousand and that represents a seven percent decrease. This is a duplex in Pine Wood Downs. In two thousand and ten, it was assessed at seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. It sold in March for sixty-five thousand dollars for a fourteen percent decrease in value. Just out of curiosity, of the ones that you've looked at this year, do you have a feel for what the, uh, percentage increase versus decrease is? I mean, is it, uh, half of them are increases, half of them are decreases or?
Right now, it's really, it's too early to tell because we haven't got, we're maybe, we're less than a third of the way into the, into the revaluation itself as far as assigning value. So it's, it could, it could change next week as far as the percentage goes because we don't have enough data in there yet.
And this next, uh, townhouse is over in Marsh Oaks, which is back behind Brenmar. In two thousand and ten, it was assessed at a hundred and one thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. And it just sold for a hundred and four thousand in June for a three percent decrease. This is a house in Country Club Acres. In two thousand and ten, it was assessed at two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. It sold in January for two hundred and twenty thousand and that represents a twenty-one percent decrease in value. This is a house that's out in Southwest Commons. And in two thousand and ten, it was assessed at a hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty. It sold in May for a hundred and fifty-two thousand and it represents a one percent decrease in value for that one. Yes, sir, question?
I don't know if we're going to get into this or not, but a lot of our tax bases, commercial property apartments or regular commercial. What process do you use to appraise those and how, how are those looking?
Be honest, we really haven't gotten into the commercial yet. We've been starting out with the residential and, uh, we've kind of addressed a, a little bit about the commercial and how much of percentage of the tax base those are when we get down to the end. But, uh, I, I haven't done enough study on this commercial. I don't, Kevin, you can jump in here if you like to, to know. I think we'll probably see some increases in some areas. And it's kind of like, there's a lot more residential than there are commercials, so I'm not sure if that'll be enough to offset. Well, we may be looking at another side.
In terms of apartments and so on, it seems like we've had a lot of apartment building and see a lot of vacancy signs.
Right.
Do you use an income approach on any of those properties?
We do. We, we're, uh, we ask taxpayers during, if they disagree with this initial assessment, to provide that information so we can, uh, look at the income approach. And we've actually had an appeal at the, uh, board of equalization meeting this year for one of the apartment complexes and that was one of their concerns also. I think back during the two thousand and ten revale, the occupancy rate on apartments was in the upper nineties and in the Chamber of Publications now it's showing around eighty percent. So we've had some that have been brought on the books at the two thousand and ten values, but we're probably going to be looking at having to, you know, when we get income information on those, we're probably going to be looking at some adjustments in the other direction this time.
But your initial appraisal is based on physical characteristics, land value and construction across?
Right. We use, we, we are required to use all three approaches to value, which is the sales comparison, the cost approach and the income approach. And of course, we have cost figures, uh, and cost, uh, manuals. So that'll be primarily what we rely on initially. And, uh, we had actually discussed in some income questionnaires out to some of those types of properties also that maybe we can get the income information ahead of time and have that calculated in the initial assessment. We're going to endeavor to do as much of that as we can also.
But income is a required component of the assessment process.
Yes, and especially on that type of property, it's very important, yes, sir.
And this next slide we're going to look at is in Blue Creek Farms, which is a subdivision out of Blue Creek Road. The two thousand and ten assessed value was two hundred and twenty thou, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. It sold in July for a hundred and ninety-four thousand and that represents a thirteen percent decrease. And now we're going to be moving to the Richlands Township. This house is in River Bluff subdivision. In two thousand and ten, it was assessed at two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. It sold in July for two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for a twenty percent decrease in value. This next slide is going to be in Trifield Estates, which is just outside the city limits of Richlands. The two thousand and ten assessed value was a hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. It sold in May for two hundred and six thousand dollars for a five percent increase in value. This is a home in Heritage Village. The two thousand and ten assessed value was a hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars.
The 2010 assessed value was 172,570. It sold in January for 166,000 or a 4% decrease in value. Now, we're over to White Oak Township. This is in Aragona Village. 2010 assessed value was 131,290. It sold in February for 145,000, which was a 10% increase in value. This next slide is in Brookstone, which is out off of Rocky Run Road in the Piney Green area. The 2010 assessed value was 189,290. It sold in June for 177,500, which was a 6% decrease in value. And we're going to show you some examples from the Swansboro Township. And this one is on Old Freeman Road, which is off of Belgrade Swansboro Road, just outside Swansboro. 2010 assessed value was 100,660. It sold in March for 96,000, which is a 5% decrease in value. This slide is a home that's in Halls Creek North Subdivision. In 2010, it was assessed at 290,260. It sold in February for 259,000, which is an 11% decrease in value. This is a home in Oyster Bay. In 2010, it was assessed at 235,380. It sold in July for 219,000 for a 7% decrease in value. This is a home in Swansboro Acres, just outside the city limits there of Swansboro. The 2010 assessed value was 171,540. It sold in February for 158,000 for an 8% decrease in value. Now, we're going to be moving into the Stump Sound Township. And this next slide is of a home in Sewell Fields, which is in Verona. The 2010 assessed value was 214,940, and it sold in February for 189,000 for a 12% decrease in value. This is a home in Old Dock Plantation. In 2010, it was assessed at 142,920. It sold this past July for 160,000 for a 12% increase in value. Now, we're going to move over to Chadwick Shores. The 2010 assessed value was 151,290. It sold in July for 135,000 for an 11% decrease. This is a home at the Village of Folkeston. The 2010 assessed value was 268,130. It sold in February for 230,000 for a 14% decrease in value. This next slide is of another townhouse that's in Holly Ridge. This is Holly Ridge Townhomes at the landing of Folkeston. In 2010, it was assessed at 131,910. It sold in March for 135,000. That represents a 2% increase in value. We have one more in Holly Ridge. This is in the neighborhoods of Holly Ridge. 2010 assessed value was 157,600. It sold in July for 160,000 for a 2% increase in value. Now, we have two slides for North Toppsel Beach. This is on Sailview Drive, which is Soundside. 2000, Toppsel, sorry, looked at the wrong one. Topsel Reef Condos, I'm sorry. This one was assessed at 80,000 in 2010, and it just sold in June for 81,500 for a 2% increase in value. Now, we're over to Soundside. 2010 assessed value was 570,520. It sold in June for 558,000 for a 2% decrease. This is in Surf City on Ninth Street. It's a canal lot. It was assessed in 2010 for 476,350. It sold in July for 458,000 for a 4% decrease. And that's, uh, all of the slides we have for the sales that we're using to analyze. Now, I'll turn it back over to Eric.
And just to kind of recap on something we talked about earlier, um, real, real property is only valued at market value during the revaluation year, but we're required to annual personal, value personal property on an annual basis. So, when motor vehicle values come out each year, they're, they're valued based on what they are at that point in time. So, the revaluation is the only time that we redo the real estate to bring those back up or down to market value so that all the assessments are equitable with the other property classes. Uh, we talked a little bit about commercial a while ago, and this is just a chart that gives a breakdown of the total tax base. And, um, real estate comprises about 86% of the total tax base. And of course, the big, uh, three quarters of it is roughly residential real property, then almost 11% is the commercial component, followed by the industrial and the use value property.
Is that county or the city you're talking about?
This is county.
County.
Yeah. I don't think I have a slide in here for the city, and I'm not sure, it'll probably vary a little bit, but it's still, real estate is going to be the vast majority of it. Uh, 12% is personal property, which includes, um, automobiles and boats and airplanes and business personal property, things like that. And then a little bit less than 2% is our public service company. So, we're primarily focused on the residential real estate during the presentation because that, that's what's going to affect the majority of the citizens. Kind of go through some of the most frequently asked questions that come up during every revaluation, uh, which, and obviously, the, the first one is what happens if I disagree with the assessed value. As we mentioned before, we were planning to try to have the notices out around the end of January, first of February timeframe. Uh, there's a process that we go through, it's not a statutory process, but we call it the informal hearings with the property owner. And last revaluation, we tried something a little different to make it as easy and as successful for citizens as possible. We'll be doing that again this year. We actually had a, a link on our website where we could go in and fill out a, a form on our website and just click a submit button, and it would email it directly to our appraisal department. Uh, they also had the capability, uh, to attach documents such as an appraisal or comps or anything they wanted us to look at, along with that electronic submission, so that people didn't actually have to take off work and go down to the tax office. Uh, they could get us the information at their convenience, and we could review it. Once we get to that informal review process, the appraisers will be taking all that information that's submitted, identifying potentially problem areas or subdivisions or neighborhoods, and going back and doing a review. And if warrants are changed, then we'll be sending additional notices out to those homeowners who have appealed at that level to notify them of the results of their, their appeal at that point. Statutory, uh, guidelines provide for a more formal review process, which is the Ozawa County Board of Equalization Review. And by statute, that board has to even be no later than the first of April, first Monday of April, and no later than the first Monday of May. And typically during the revale year, it's probably on the latter end of that timeframe when they will, uh, meet. But hopefully, by the time we get the, send the notices out and go through the informal reviews, most of the adjustments will, will occur during that time before budgets are set. Um, there, obviously, there'll be some additional adjustments that may happen, um, in the May and June timeframe, but we'll try to, to estimate those values for as best we can based on the volume of appeals that we have at that point in time, so that you'll have some good numbers to work with during the budget time. Uh, the final step in the appeals process, if they disagree with the informal and also the local Board of Equalization Review, is to appeal it to the state level, which is the, um, North Carolina Property Tax Commission. When taxpayers disagree with our value, we ask them to, um, give us what their opinion of the value is and how they can support that. Uh, we recommend if they've had a recent fee appraisal, submit that, um, whether it be for a sale or refinance or home equity loan. Uh, sometimes if it's an older structure, it may have deterioration that we're not aware of, so we ask them to, to provide pictures of either the inside or the outside that would show those, those conditions. And if they're aware of any comparable sales that occurred in their neighborhood that maybe we're not aware of, um, and to bring those to our attention also. The second question, and this used to be a lot more prevalent because usually values were, in, in the past couple of revales, we've seen some pretty hefty increases in the area. Uh, but basically, we, we try to remind folks that the values didn't change from one year to the next, but they're basically occurred over a four-year period of time, and a lot can happen in the real estate market up and down during that period of time. One of the things that we've mentioned is that the sales of older homes and new construction were valued at the 2010 rate. So, properties that came online since 2010 were valued using that 2010 Schedule of Values, not necessarily what they just sold for, because by statutes, we're required to do that. Uh, the 2014 values will be based on sales that occurred during the 2013 calendar year, which is leading up to the revaluation date.
Now, let me ask you a question here. If, we know that there are a lot of homes in, in the Jacksonville area that have been on the market for a while and they haven't sold. If a person comes in and says, well, you have my value at 250,000, I have it listed at 240,000, nobody is buying the house, do you take that in consideration?
Absolutely, because if, if they got it, if we've had it assessed more than what they're trying to sell it for, I think that's a pretty good indication that we're probably a little on the high side. So, we'd absolutely, we'd take that into consideration. And once again, the, the purpose is to equalize property values, not necessarily generate revenue with the revaluation. It's basically just a redistribution of the tax burden based on what the current values are. Obviously, we don't know how much taxes will change. That depends on a number of factors. As the governing bodies meet and consider their budget requirements, um, the revaluation is only one part of the, of the component that determines what the ultimate, um, tax bill is going to be. The budgets have to be set, and the tax rates have to be determined by the, the county commissioners or the, the local town boards in order to tell exactly how much their taxes will be compared to the prior year. Uh, the effective date for the revaluation is January 1st, 2014. Uh, this will be the basis for tax bills. It'll be mailed next July, so this is basically a year off before folks are actually going to see the tax bill that's associated with the revaluation. And of course, they'll be due September 14. And if you have any other additional questions or any other topics that we didn't cover, we'll be glad to try to address those for you.
Kansas, any questions of Mr. Smith or, or, uh, Mr. Turner?
I have one more question. How much property tax is collected in Ozawa County? Can you tell me?
How much tax?
I mean, you know, we got the city, the county, the municipalities.
I do not have that number right offhand. I'd say it's probably 95 million or so, when you add the county, cities together. I don't think it's hit 100 million yet, but I think it's around 96 million per year.
Other questions?
I can get that for you if you like. Thank you.
Eric and Kevin, appreciate you coming tonight and updating us on the process of the revaluation.
Thank you for having us. Thank you for the opportunity. Appreciate it very much.
Mayor, if you'd like, before we begin the next topic, could we take a short break?
Yes, sir. Stand adjourned. Recession.[1736.33]